I call the order, the April 3rd, 2025, regular meeting of the Whittier Port and Harbor Advisory Commission at 7:12 PM. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin tonight's meeting, please note that digital copies of tonight's meeting packet are available on our website. QR code is provided just outside that door or in the top left corner of the YouTube video. Open your phone's camera to scan the code and you will be able to easily access the packet. Madam Clerk, can we have roll call, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Loane?
Present.
Commissioner Hill?
Present.
Commissioner Yelverton?
Present.
Commissioner Carlson?
Present.
Commissioner Goldstein?
Present.
Chair Ozenak?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Hearing no further discussion, we'll please call the roll. Moving on to citizen comments. Sorry about that. It's my fault. The clerical error, my fault. It was clearly laid out for me. Citizen comments on any agenda item except those scheduled for public hearing are welcome at this time. Those who have signed in will be given the first opportunity to speak. Please note, this is not a time for dialogue. It is a time for you to speak and the commission to listen. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed in?
No one has signed in.
Is there anyone present? Seeing none. Approval of agenda and consent agenda? Commissioner Goldstein?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the agenda and consent agenda, Port and Harbor Commission meeting April 30th, or April 3rd, 2025.
I will second.
Okay, can we call the roll?
Voting on the motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda. Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Ms. Loane?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Yelverton?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The motion passes and the agenda and consent agenda are approved. On tonight's consent agenda are the approval of the February 6th, 2025, regular meeting minutes.
Okay, presentations and reports. No presentations. And for Chair report, I was just going to, I was just sort of inspired to say that we had a great work session before this, this meeting. And I think we came up with a lot of great ideas to, for this commission to help shape the future, for sure, of the harbor through different, various ways. And I'm looking forward to the work that comes out of that. Some observations while on summer being already here in Whittier. I think all of us recognize there's no snow left in town. There's no melting we need to wait for. And even though there's no shrimp opener on April 15th, which is sad in some ways, it sure hasn't seemed to slow down traffic. So I was happy, I don't mean literally car traffic, just foot traffic, cars, visitors to Whittier is increasing. Clearly, we are a destination, especially in the harbor front, for people to come from town for something to do down the road. And so it was great to see signage already out, just things already taking shape much earlier than I would normally see. So I thought that was great. So it's good work for, I guess, Public Works and the harbor staff and everybody. Mr. Vice Chair, do you have a report?
No.
Harbor Master Board?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's been a very, very busy month for the Harbor Department, at least for, for myself. With the weather kind of mellowing out a little bit and warming up, they've finally gotten down to B float and they've been replacing some whalers that got broken along with some cleats that were ripped out. So that's ongoing. I think we pretty much got that wrapped up. We've done some repairs on C float, or pardon me, on city float, city dock. There was some punky wood there and it's getting a lot of use right now. Copper River's been doing a lot of fish offloads there. Black cod have been coming, streaming in for the last couple of days. Their new, their new charger, name's Jessie. She's been super awesome to work with. And they're going to be starting to set up in the DeLong Dock in the coming weeks. So you'll see some action down there. Right now, the thing's slowing things down, just turning water on. And I'm just being a little overly cautious. I know it's nice right now, but we start hooking water up and, and we get any freezes, it's just going to tear up backflow preventers and everything else. And then those are very expensive to repair. So I'm just being a little extra cautious. Let's see, administratively, I've been very involved with several grant opportunities lately. Shelby and I have been working on the recycle, is it the reclaim, recycle, re-v?
Renewable energy, yes. So we've been working on renewable energy lighting grant for the boardwalk and the launch ramp. And we got two bids in today. So I, we've got to pour over those, but that is to replace the lighting. I've been talking about it for, you know, several months now, the launch ramp lighting with LED and the lighting on the boardwalk in front of the Harbor Masters' office. So hopefully, we can get moving on that sooner than later. More to follow. I have been working with the permitting for the harbor Phase 3. Right now, it's at National, NOAA's got it right now. They're working on the Marine Mammal Protection Act stuff. Not sure when we're going to finally see that, but thankfully, we aren't starting until September. So we've got a little bit of time there. We do have the 100% plan submitted today for approval. We'll talk more about that in the next resolution. We ordered about $70,000, $70,000 worth of new, new core Wi-Fi power meters that are going to be going in the existing power pedestals to make reading power a lot easier and a lot cleaner. We ordered up the new kiosks and they should be here, I'm going to say probably in three or four weeks. Our dumpsters are done in here. That was a $27,000 purchase, money obligated last year. We managed to get seven dumpsters from Capital Industries down south. Put a shout out to Alaska Marine Lines. They did the shipping up here pro bono. That was about $12,000 ask and they hooked us up with that. So many thanks to Mr. Mark Reed. Let's see, we are, I've been knee deep in the Whittier Mast, Whittier Department of Transportation master plan and study. That is being completed by Dowell. City's working on just how we're going to make transportation routes and access in Whittier better. That's really early in that process and we've got a lot to cover. So more to follow, a lot more to follow on that. We arranged to have about 1,500 gallons of used oil pulled out of town. That was from last year. We are working on some informational signage for our restrooms to better mark those. Been talking about it for years. We're finally going to get it done. We had a very good visit from Sochi Castanada with Marad to help us kind of work a little bit better on a grant opportunities for the DeLong Dock. So more to follow on that. She was very helpful. She came up from Seattle. She was already in Anchorage, made the drive out. We gave her the $5 tour of Whittier and showed her everything we had going on. And she not only mentioned, you know, the grant opportunities of Marad, but a couple of other things for what we've got going on in town. So that was very helpful. Let's see, I did have a discussion with the state on the head of the bay launch ramp and future plans. That's going to tie in a lot with the Waterfront Economic Development Plan that is in draft form that went to the Project Action Committee. We had a meeting with them last night just to kind of polish up some finer points on that. The plan is to send that out to the PAC, have them take a look at it, throw their input into that. And then from that input, we will come out with a solid non-draft plan that we will put out to the public for a 45-day comment period. That is going to be an outstanding opportunity to throw in all your ideas that you had for the Triangle and head of the bay and different things like that. We, the council approved the Clean Harbors pledge for the city Whittier. So that's exciting that Kyle's been really running that one through. And if we can get certified as a clean harbor, we get a flag, we get to say we're certified clean harbor. We're going for the gold standard. The next one up is the platinum. We'd be a little tough to do platinum, but it's nice that they're kind of stair stepping to let smaller communities that don't always have all the opportunities available to them to, you know, do the best we can. So that's coming. I hope to have that before the summer's over. And let's see, a lot of stuff going on. And we'll talk more about Phase 3 when we get to that resolution instead of burning up a bunch of discussion about that now. But that's about it for me. Oh, we did have a substantial amount of storm damage up around the triangle. I'm sure if anybody lives here, they've been up there. It's going to take a fair amount of work to backfill and, and clean that up. So I'm sure we'll be putting our heads together and getting something going on that. So more to follow on that again. Thank you.
Commissioner Goldstein?
Thank you, Mr. Chair of the Harbor Master. Just two quick questions here. Any plans or progress on Smitty's Cove ramp? And also, I saw a big crane out there at the harbor entrance a couple of days here in the last couple of weeks. And I wasn't sure whether they were working on the end of Whittier or they were doing something for the harbor. Do you have any information on that?
Sure. Smitty's Cove got fixed with some self-help. So the ramp there. So I think we'll buy another couple of years out of it. As far as the large dredge crane you saw, that was Harris Sand and Gravel. They were contracted by the railroad to do some dredging at the barge landing, I guess, closer to the shore. There was a big rise of mud and gravel collected there. So they couldn't get the barge over at lower, lower tides. So they came in and I think they pulled about 11,000, 1,100 cubic yards of gravel and such out. So they were permitted and everything was good to go with that. So, so when they were, I could only see the crane back behind the end at Whittier. So they weren't really working on anything there. They were probably just at the passenger dock? Is that? Yeah, they were just getting fuel, I think.
Any other questions for her, Mr. Board?
We will be deploying the new dumpsters tomorrow. We had to coordinate with Alaska Waste to remove the six and the four yarders. The plan right now is to put two eight-yard dumpsters at the top of the gangway and then one, just for the time being, at the top of the launch ramp.
I had one question from a community member earlier, the, speaking of the lighting and the launch ramp, the, there's a, like one bollard missing and some loose cleats. Was there a plan? I forgot to ask earlier in the work session. Is there a plan to repair those?
Yeah, we'll get on.
Okay. Next on resolutions, Resolution 2025-003, adopting the 100% design of the Whittier Small Boat Harbor Phase 3 rebuild project. Can we get a staff report?
So we've, we've been methodically going from 35 to 65 to 95 to 100%. Think we've got a great plan going here. They are, I've, we've already issued a notice to proceed as far as the production of the floats and that goes. I did get a, an updated bid cost for the finger float attachment modifications, basically doing away with the triangles that has been discussed. And that will be an $81,600 add if we go that route. And we don't have it in the budget. So I, we could look at dipping into the MRF fund if we wanted to try to go that route. I was reminded by Mr. Harris and by Chip with PNND that, you know, we're, we're creating a situation where we're talking about tying 24, 26, 28-foot boats up, not 35, 40 footers. So the, 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 the gain isn't really there. So I would say, the other thing that I'm working on right now is a 15 by 20 fish cleaning float that would go back, replace the one that we lost in the storm over on Whiskey float. That's about a $97,000 buy right now. That's to get it built, sent up, installed. I'm, I've asked the state for money. I don't know if that's going to happen. But I would say that our money would be better spent in that regard than in something that really would benefit just a small, small, small handful of vessels, in my opinion. So I'll throw that out there and discuss.
Commissioner Goldstein, I think we will have to wait until after the motion, right, for discussion? Correct any questions? So hang on.
Questions are acceptable, just not a debate, essentially.
Oh, if you have a question, go ahead. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair of the Harbor Master. Just, just out of curiosity, this $81,000 add-on to get rid of the triangles, that doesn't have anything to do with the piles, right? If, if those went in, it wouldn't reduce the number of piles? Or would the piles stay the same?
Piles are going to remain the same.
And just to clarify, you said that the fish cleaning floating station was 97,000?
That is correct. We've got it on our CIP and I think we've got 200,000, 250,000 dedicated for that. So that's, we're, we'd save money because we're not having to mobilize somebody. You know, they're already here. They're going to do the work. They're already shipping floats up, so.
If we could put a roof over that fish cleaning station with some lighting, you'd really knock it out of the ballpark there.
300,000, can I hear it going once?
You know, I've, I've just got to say that I think we put that together, that old one for about $15,000.
I did have another question on the pile and finger layout page. I wish these were numbered again, but there, you, Harbor Master Board, you had pointed out that on float C, the current piles are at the end of the fingers. It shows existing wood piles on the walkway. Oh, I'm sorry. Did I just missed it? Oh, I don't have that copy. Okay. So page eight, you said? Yeah, on page eight, it just looks like there's existing wood. And I, my, the reason for the question is, is, is it, is the drawing incorrect? So we're, are we paying for removal of piles that aren't there? Or am I misreading it?
So if you look at page eight, that is the existing piles as we speak. The dark dots are the ones that are there now.
So the new ones will be still only on the fingers?
Right. So if you look at page nine, you'll note that on B float, there are none on the main walk and they're just on the ends. Now, the way Bellingham Marine pretensions these, they're all pretensioned. They actually have more strength with the, just the fingers attached, with them just attached at the ends. Now, my question is, and it's still outstanding, is there are no pile, if you'll notice, on Z float. So I am waiting for, and they left whiskey off. So don't worry about whiskey. They didn't account for those on whiskey on either page. But I am concerned about Z. So that is a question right now off to Bellingham. And he couldn't make the last meeting when I, on Wednesday. So that would be the only outstanding issue that we've got to address. But everything else looks really great.
What about, what about the pilings between, was that Z and the, over the ones I have to go through to get out?
They'll be removed.
Okay.
Any other questions? Commissioner Yelverton on the Zoom teams?
No questions. It's looking really great.
Okay. Is there a motion in a second?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Now, is there any discussion? Commissioner Hill? Mr. Goldstein? Mr. Carlson? Ms. Loane?
My only question would be, you said that you're going to talk to Bellingham Marine about the pilings on Z, right?
Yeah, that conversation's out. Yeah, I've got that question out right now.
So we can prove this based upon?
Yes.
Thank you.
And if push comes to shove, I can leave a couple of wooden ones on there. Right?
Ms. Yelverton? Ms. Yelvorten? I saw I had not.
Oh, just, just nodding along.
Yeah, yeah. Any further discussion? Hearing none?
Voting.
Madam Clerk, take the roll.
Yes, absolutely. Voting on the motion to approve Resolution 2025-003, adopting the 100% design of the Whittier Small Boat Harbor Phase 3 rebuild project. Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Ms. Sloan?
Yes.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Ms. Yelvorten?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The motion passes and Resolution 2025-003 is approved.
Okay, moving on the, moving along the agenda. Other new business, there's none. Any commission comments is next. I'll go back down the line again. Commissioner Hill, did you have any additional comments?
No, I just, after hearing Harbor Master Borg's report on how they, you know, the month they just had, I just, yeah, appreciate all that work you guys put forward there at the harbor and the, the clean harbors. That's really cool. So, good job.
Commissioner Goldstein?
Yeah, I just, just wanted to mention one thing. Some of you may know Chris Pallister. He owns that Seakeeper. It's a, a large, I'm not sure what model that is, a Tally Craft or, it's, it's over in the harbor. And he's been working for the last, oh gosh, over 20 years on cleanup. He started working cleanup in Prince William Sound, and then he founded the Gulf of Alaska Keeper Organization. And, and this year, he's got funds again to go ahead and continue cleaning up the beaches of Montague Island. There's a, a website, Center for Alaska Coastal Studies. And if you go to the volunteer section over there, there's just an excellent video on plastics and just waste that they've gone ahead and bagged up on Montague Island. He has a, a barge contracted out. It's about the size of a football field and a whole lot of that stuff out. Also, he's working on a plan to use this old Ship Creek Power Plant and convert that into a recycling, a real recycling facility, plastic recycling facility. So all of these plastic buoys, all of this line, all of the rope that's been sitting around and even styrofoam will be dealt with in this. And his plan, unlike the one currently where they're basically taking plastics and trying to reform those into building materials, his idea is instead of building materials that eventually decompose and go back into the environment, his idea is to encapsulate those and make stronger road surfaces, stronger concrete, stronger blocks there for building and so forth. So it's all encapsulated. And, and I just, just wanted to say, if you get a chance, you might look at this 18-minute video over there. It's, it's pretty inspirational, and if you know anybody who's interested in this, this will continue on for several more years. It's just an extremely tremendous opportunity to get involved in doing something really positive.
What was the website again?
It's under the Center for Alaska Coastal Studies. And then there's kind of a sub-menu there and one says volunteers. And then if you go down that, you check in, it says Montague Cleanup, Montague Island Cleanup. And then further down is the actual video. Chris, as I say, has had a boat here for decades. He had the Opus, which was another boat here. He has a, a, it's a kind of a landing craft boat that he uses in this. And he's, he has just a tremendous amount of involvement from, I think FedEx was involved in transporting some of this stuff from helicopter outfits. And he also now is kind of joining up with Dow Chemicals, interestingly enough. I think they make all this stuff and now they're really concerned about their public image. And I think doing something to, to remediate this or take care of this is pretty important to them too. So he's a mover and shaker and he was an attorney for many decades. He was a builder for many decades and, and now he's dedicated his, his, his life to this.
Thank you. Commissioner Carlson?
Hey, Dave. Thank you for all your work on that dock. And then just, thank you.
Commissioner Sloan?
Sorry, I have two quick things. Speaking about beautification and cleanup week, Whittier Cleanup Week is May 11th through the 17th. And we're going to do a free-form way of doing it again, leaving Alpar bags available for people to pick up. And you can clean up whenever is convenient for you, whichever zone around town is where you'd like to clean up. And then it will culminate in the head of the bay cleanup on May 17th. And then another side note, which this is something that I, I'm assuming if it does happen, we'll go on a further agenda. But Parks and Rec did procure a kayak storage rack. And I do not remember if it was six bays or eight, but it, we do have permission to set it up at Smitty's. And I, you know, over our Parks and Rec meeting and then talking with Chris, Chris had kind of hinted or said that I should maybe bring it to this commission that Parks and Rec were trying to work out a fee schedule for storing kayaks. And we were looking at like the city of Wrangle, they charge $100 a year to store your kayak at the launch in a little slip. And it would just be nice if we could recommend to council or have a resolution, whatever we need to do, I guess, to recommend that maybe if we are getting those funds, that they get put in a particular account or whatever for kayak infrastructure moving forward. If we, if it only has six bays and we require, you know, $100 a year for six kayaks, it's already $600 into purchasing another rack or a little portable launch or signage, something like that. Just an idea and kind of what Parks and Rec slash the recreational kayakers have been talking about in town. So. Thank you.
Commissioner Yelvorten?
I do have one quick question for Harbor Master Borg. You mentioned the dumpster placement. Will the recycling bins be returning for cardboard this season?
It's still here. It's just over by the, I moved it out of that area and over to the, by the, the empty spot by the harbor store and the restroom, just to get it out from that walkway. It's here. It's there now.
Staying for the season in that location?
Oh, yeah. Yep.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay. Any other commission comments? Let's move on to citizen comments. I'm not going to even read that. We can just skip right past it, say none. And then we can probably skip on past the commission administration response to those comments. And is there any further business? Anyone has? Harbor Master Board?
I was just going to bring up that, you know, we talked a little bit about this fish cleaning float. I am working with the state to try to secure some funding for that, if not all of it. When I talked to her the other day, she didn't make it sound like it was a big issue. So it'd be awesome if we could score that amount of money or at least pay for, you know, the cost of the float. And in that process, what I'll do is I'll, that'll be a whole nother resolution that I'll bring forth to this body and then ask the council to obligate funds. So just, that's that process for that.
I have a follow-up question. Follow-up question, sorry. If we do get that fish cleaning station, and then Trey mentioned like having like a tin roof or something, metal roof over it or something, is that something that the city could build or do we need to get it contracted out just to cover it? Like just if we're doing a rain shield, basically?
I will mention this. Anytime we start doing that, we have to design that in early. We put a cover on something in Whittier with this wind that we have. I mean, it's, it's tough. It's really tough. So let me just work on one thing and we'll see where I can go from there. But, you know, we can always do self-help stuff, but we got to build something that's not going to become a missile in the wintertime.
Thank you.
Just as a follow-up to that, maybe there's a way when, if we get something designed and there's not funds for a roof, maybe we can design something that could have one added later if we could get more funds for it, so we're prepared for it. Any other, anything else? Anybody have any?
Or if we can't do a, you know, roof or something like that, maybe I'll find the funding to, you know, we've talked about signage or the ability to hang fish and present that in a way, better way.
More info for that WEDP.
Okay. There being no further business, meeting is adjourned at 7:42.